At 20 minutes to the wire of the United States of America, and it's a very important for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the glory of the Lord.
Yes. Chairman Williams.
Here.
Vice Chair Women Kiefer.
Here.
Mr. Albrecht.
Here.
Mr. Di Maria.
Here.
Mr. O'Hanlon.
Here.
Mrs. Seber.
Here.
Mrs. Williams.
Here.
Mr. Morales.
Here.
Mr. Anderson.
Here.
Thank you.
Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
There are to the consent agenda. We have a personnel, under personnel ratification of personnel. To the discussion agenda, policies, and those are the policies on Section A, C, E, G, I, J, and L.
All right. Excellent. Didn't miss a beat. Thank you. Next on the agenda is superintendent's announcements and spotlights, Ms. Radford.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Dr. McGorke, other members of the board. Good evening to you. So good evening to everyone that is here tonight. We have a full house, so we're excited to have so many guests with us as we recognize some of our spotlights and announcements for the evening. For our first few announcements, I'd like the chairman, you all, to come down with us, whoever's designated tonight. We're going to start with our student recognitions tonight. Osborne High School CTE state award winner, so this is very exciting. On April 21st, 2018, Osborne Skills USA members won Virginia state championships in three categories. As I call your names, please come forward. Team of criminal justice students Maria Pineda, Isayla Ramirez Amaya, and Leonardo Solis. They won the gold in crime scene investigation. Cosmetology students Dania Lopez with her model, Dania Gonzalez, won the gold in aesthetics contest. And Ty Ford won the gold in barbering competition. Cosmetology students Andrea Valensi placed fifth in action skills leadership competition. And Yancy Salvatera Lonis placed in the top 10 out of 38 competitors. The state champions will move on to the national competitions, which will be held in Louisville, Kentucky. The sponsors for the team are here tonight, Ms. Arnaz D'Avallà. You come forward. And Ms. Sandy Hine, who is the advisor for the Osborne Skills USA. I would like to add quickly that it was noted that the Osborne High School membership in Skills USA is at its all-time high, thanks to the leadership Ms. Hine has provided. Osborne High School was awarded the Membership Plus One Award for increasing the membership by 42 members. They now have a total of 102 student members and six teachers as professional members. The group brought the three state championship banners. Those will be permanently displayed at Osborne High School. Congratulations and thank you so much for representing Manassas City Public Schools so well. Probably. Some of the shorter ones come up front, please. Ms. Miller's gonna assist me tonight. Can you see everybody's faces? Make sure you got Ms. Hine back there. She's hiding. Thank you, thank you. Okay. Governor Ralph Northam designated May 7th through the 11th as Teacher Appreciation Week in the Commonwealth of Virginia, asking others to join him in acknowledging the commitment, enthusiasm, caring, professionalism, and compassion teachers extend to their students every day. The Department of Education will be sharing the hashtag #ThankATeachervA messages all week long in support of the national celebration. The Thank-A-Teacher campaign is sponsored by the Virginia Lottery in partnership with Virginia Tourism Corporation and the Virginia Parent Teacher Association. Tonight, we are honored to have a collection of our teachers here as representatives of the profession. As I call your names, please come forward. I will then share the proclamation provided by the governor's office. From Baldwin Elementary, we have Jill Nelson and Brittany Dobberman. From Jenny Dean, Karen Holden, and Bridgette Williams. From Hayden Elementary is Lisa Harlow. From Rowan Elementary, Debbie Shoup and Diane Ramsey. Weems Elementary, Jeb Mann. From Baldwin Intermediate, we have Dixie Skinner. Mayfield Intermediate, Alicia Mars. From Osborne High School, we have Maggie Connors. As I said, this is a small representation of our fabulous teaching staff in our schools. I would like to read the proclamation aloud for all of you. "Dated March 7th, 2018, whereas strong and effective public schools are essential to the economic prosperity of Virginia and ensure that we continue to make social, technological, and scientific advancements; and whereas qualified, dedicated teachers are critical to the success of our students and are fundamental to the strength of our Commonwealth; and whereas Virginia's teachers are entrusted with helping our students reach their full academic potential and exhibit an unwavering devotion to student success; and whereas teachers are essential to empowering families and communities to support our children and their potential to achieve; and whereas the Virginia Lottery, the source of nearly $8 billion for public schools since 1999, is partnering with the Virginia Tourism Corporation and the Virginia PTA for the Third Annual Thank-A-Teacher Campaign to encourage Virginians to send thank-you notes to teachers across the Commonwealth; and whereas Teacher Appreciation Week is an opportunity for Virginians to join with the teachers around the country on the critical role our teachers play in shaping our children and the future of the Commonwealth. Now therefore, I, Ralph Northam, do hereby recognize May 7th through the 11th, 2018, as Teacher Appreciation Week in our Commonwealth of Virginia, and I call this observance to the attention of all of our citizens. Thank you so much, teachers, for everything that you do." We'll make it work, and they can kind of come around this way a little bit this time, so that's good. Get everybody in there. Think you might be able to get everybody in view. Somebody hiding behind Jeb over there. I know.
Can maybe put a few more in the front.
Yeah, Maggie's gonna kinda squat.
I'm not gonna be able to see you in the back. You're gonna have to come up front.
Yeah.
There we go.
There, yeah, that's good. Oh, good. Yep, that's good, Maggie. Yeah. Thank you all. Thank you, thank you. All right. Pouring on the appreciation. School nurse appreciation. National School Nurse Day is tomorrow, Wednesday, May 9th. We would like to join the National Association of School Nurses in recognizing and celebrating our school nurses for the role they play in our teaching and learning environment. As many of you know, today's children face more chronic illnesses such as asthma, diabetes, and food allergies than ever before. The knowledge, assessment skills, and judgment of licensed professional school nurses help ensure the provision of quality health care to children. School nurses take on a variety of roles every day. For many children, the school nurse is the only health professional they may have access to on a regular basis. Several of our nurses are here tonight, so please help me celebrate them as they come forward. From Baldwin Elementary and Baldwin Intermediate School, Lisbeth Bolts. From Rowan Elementary, we have Lisa McClaren. From Jenny Dean Elementary, we have Leslie Penzie. From Metz Middle School, Melissa Reagan is here. Representing Osborne High School, Jessica Robinson. From Hayden Elementary, Kelly Schetzler. From Baldwin Intermediate and Osborne High Schools, Sherri Steinler. And the supervisor of nursing is here. She's new to our division, Suzanne Renninger. Two of our nurses could not be with us tonight. Mary Burns from Mayfield Intermediate and Kathy Gray from Weems Elementary, so we definitely want to share some appreciation for them in their absence. Our school nurses help improve attendance through health promotion, disease prevention, and disease management. Improved attendance means healthy students are in our classrooms, ready to learn every day, so we want to thank you all for everything that you do on behalf of our students here in Manassas City Schools. Thank you. There we go. They know the routine now.
So never once you go in the crowd.
I know. Somebody, yeah, there you go. I think she might be able to do it. Family, you're welcome to take pictures. It's okay. I know. You have to look. Okay, our next two recognitions focus on our community partners. The Virginia School Board Association Business Honor Roll. Each year, the Virginia School Boards Association, or VSBA, gives school divisions the opportunity to recognize local businesses for their support through the VSBA Business Honor Roll Program. Businesses large and small, corporate-owned or family-run, play a key role in supporting our community and especially our schools. Our local businesses contribute to our schools in many ways, including helping schools with in-kind or financial contributions, donating to scholarship programs, supporting extracurricular activities, offering internship opportunities, volunteering in the schools, and sponsoring field trips. Their support is invaluable. While there are certainly many businesses in our great city that we would like to recognize tonight, we would like to honor three local businesses for their ongoing support of Manassas City Public Schools, and the VSBA has provided a great certificate for them to display in their places of business. From Lockheed Martin, we have Melissa Banks. Lockheed supports MCPS in many ways, so many I can't even go over all of them, but where there's providing leadership with our Osborne High School robotics team, providing input for our Governor STEM Academy, while sponsoring scholarships for our students. They have a strong presence in our school division, and we are so thankful for that. So thank you so much. Next, we have Miller Toyota of Manassas. I believe Service Manager Robert Cook and April Siders are here tonight from the Customer Relations Department. I'd like to give a shout-out to Ken Shepard and his absence. He wanted to be here tonight, so we thank them for representing Miller. Miller also provides leadership with our Governor STEM Academy. Additionally, they assisted Osborne High School last month during the after prom by providing a distracted driver demonstration to promote safety on the road for our students. So we're so thankful for all that you all do for us as well. And finally, we have from Centifuse, Jackie Crick. Oh, and Impact OU, sorry. Back in December, Osborne High School launched a partnership with Centifuse to assist with entrepreneurship classes. Students embarked on a nine-week course journey where the students had access to speakers and activities in the areas of business, business finance, entrepreneurship, and law, all designed to get them on the right track for starting their own business if they so desire. So we thank you so much for all that you've done so far with Manassas City Public Schools and valuable support to our students. All of you. Caroline Schaubert, yes, thank you all. Thank you so much. Thank you. One more. Our next spotlight is on the Prince William County Bar Association. The Prince William County Bar Association has done a great deal of work within Manassas City Public Schools, providing guidance to help teach our students to become engaged citizens. Tonight, we are privileged to have Alyssa Hudson, Executive Director of the Bar Association, and Bar President Sarah Knapp with us. Ladies, would you please come forward? Please bear with me as I briefly tell you some of the great things that they have been doing in Manassas City Public Schools for quite some time. Our Character Counts Essay Contest. The Bar Association sponsors an essay contest each fall, open to all students enrolled in public middle schools in Prince William and the cities of Manassas and Manassas Park. The purpose of the contest is to encourage students to focus on the positive character attributes that form the six pillars of good character, which are the foundation of the nationally recognized Character Counts Program. Members of the bar volunteer to read and judge the essays and select one winner per pillar of character and one runner-up. At a special ceremony to commend them for their excellent essays, the winning students receive cash prizes and awards, which are made possible by generous grant from the Bar Association, or from the Bar Foundation. Metz Middle School Eighth Grade Court Tour and Mock Trial, 45 Metz eighth graders have participated in this. The objective of the Court Tours and Mock Trial program is to provide an educational and career development opportunity for middle school students by organizing tours of the Prince William County Judicial Center, followed by a mock trial. Students visit courtrooms while court is in session, at the discretion of the court, and are guided through the Judicial Center by volunteer judges, attorneys, interpreters, and law enforcement personnel who give a brief overview of the civil and criminal justice system during the tour. Following the tour, volunteer judges, attorneys, and bailiffs guide the students through a mock trial, which depicts a typical situation that teenagers might experience. Although the mock trial is scripted, the students have an opportunity to discuss the possible outcomes of the trial with a volunteer judge prior to learning the actual ruling. This interactive learning environment is well-received by our students and our teachers alike. The So Year 18 Program, all government classes at Osborne participate in this. Each year, the Bar Association brings the So Year 18 Program to every public high school within the county and the cities of Manassas and Manassas Park. Through this program, an informative booklet titled So Year 18, developed by the Virginia State Bar Conference of local bar associations, is distributed to all high school seniors. This booklet contains information about a wide variety of legal rights, restrictions, and responsibilities that change when a young person turns 18. By providing age-appropriate legal resources to the students, the Prince William Bar hopes to make model citizens of the area's maturing youth. A new program that's in its inaugural year is the Metz Eighth Grade Rule of Law Program. This is another opportunity the association is taking to help our students develop an understanding of the rule of law, encouraging active and engaged citizenship, which is vital to our democracy. So all of this is offered at no cost to the school system or our students, and we just want to say thank you so much, Prince William County Bar Association, for all you do for the students of Manassas City Public Schools. And I just want to say thank you so much for allowing me the opportunity to share that information, because this is real-life experience that our students are gaining, that you can't really just get, you know, out of the textbooks, and our community partners are doing so much in our schools, and so we're very grateful for all of that. Thank you all so much.
Thank you, Ms. Radford. Next, we have Board Committee Reports, Academics Committee, Ms. Seber.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We had our last academic committee on April 30th. We met to discuss the health resource adoption, get a technology update, and also an update on policy number IKFD, which is the alternative path to attaining standards units of credit. And you'll see more about that in future school board meetings.
Thank you very much. Educational Support, Mr. Di Maria.
No report, sir.
Thank you. Policy Committee, Ms. Kiefer.
Yes, sir. We met last evening, and we'll be talking about some of the policies during our discussion tonight.
Awesome. Thank you. Finance Committee, Mr. Albrecht.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thanks. Everybody knows we're in the midst of a joint series of meetings with council to renegotiate, redefine, re-energize our joint agreement for the next several years on what our funding agreement is. Our next meeting on that is next Thursday, the 17th, at 7:00 PM in City Hall. We look forward to continuing the dialogue with council as we sit and talk about our increased needs, as we look at what the state funding is, the federal funding, the local funding, realizing that on a per pupil basis, the state, federal, local money is about what it was in 2006, when there's been a 20% inflation, and we pay for debt service for the increased enrollment for several schools. So it's challenges that we all face, and it's a dialogue we need to have as a community so we can decide what's best for the city. So we look forward to continuing that.
Thank you, sir. Personnel Committee, Mrs. Williams.
Yes, Mr. Chair. We had actually two meetings last week. I believe it was last week. These days start to run, and we get so many meetings. We had seven applicants who applied for our student representatives to the school board, and they were very, very qualified. I was very excited to have seven candidates. It was a very, very hard choice, but I think we're getting there. But I wanted to thank all the students who applied. They just did a fantastic job. I'm so proud of our students. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. Next, we have Board Member Comments. Before we get to that, I noticed a few dignitaries in the audience. I see Mr. Lovejoy. Nice time. That's there. Thank you, our councilman. I thought I saw Ms. Sabeski. There she is. Thank you for being here. The mayor was here earlier, and he stopped by. And I also see Reverend Doctor Pastor Savage here, so thank you for, I guess I said Reverend Doctor Pastor, maybe it's Pastor Doctor Savage. But you know, you got it going on. So thank you for being here. We appreciate it, up to all of you. Board Member Comments, we will start with one of our student reps, Mr. Hernandez Morales. Start, yeah.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm not gonna lie. I wake up at like 4:57 in the morning, and I'm like exhausted, like right now here. It's like 7:26. I'm just like exhausted. But like, so when I think about what the teachers do, I bet they do way more. Like, I literally remember when I, not just teachers, I remember when Dr. McGorre wrote me like a letter of recommendation like in an hour, like at set, like at 9:00 or 10:00 at night. And like, and I know that she had like a stressful day, and it's not just the, you know, teachers, it's not just the school board members, anyone who's ever helped you in, I guess, your career, or as in my career right now, I just like, oof, sorry. This started a bit. I can literally look in the crowd right now. I can see McNamara, Ms. Keegan, Mr. Williams in the back. I can see literally everyone who has been here to help me, and I just wanted to say I thank you for everything you guys have done, and I encourage everyone else, even if you are an adult, to thank all of your teachers or anyone who has helped you, since this week is very special. And Osborne High School, Osborne High School's Guitar Fest is this week, Thursday, at 7:00 PM, so I encourage everyone who is not doing anything Thursday, like me, to go, you know, attend it. So, yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. And get used to those long days, you know, get used to them. But thank you for being here. Mr. Anderson, next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Today, my comments will be very brief due to allergies. I'd like to just say congratulations to everyone who was congratulated tonight. It's a really wonderful thing. Another thing I'd like to say is that super excited for graduation. And that's all. Counting down the days.
Thank you, sir. Next, we're gonna start with Mr. Albrecht this time.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. Let me start off with a sincere congratulations to the students today, and especially the Skills USA, and a thank you to our business partners and the Bar Association. What we're really talking about here is a core passion of many of ours, and that's workforce readiness and making sure we have students prepared to enter whatever it is they choose to do upon graduation, as long as it's not the unemployment line. So it's that kind of partnership that we have that's really making a difference. As far as engaging with things, several of us, Mrs. Seber, Mr. Handel and I, we got to walk around the track, I guess, Saturday a week ago for the Osborne High School Walk for Water Project. I did not brave carrying the 44-pound jug of water. I figured I'd let the kids do that. And I've been driving all over the state. I was at the VAS Association lunch today, recognizing the Regional Superintendent, Superintendent of the Year. Been at regional meetings down at Radford for the Valley Reef, pardon me, the Blue Ridge Region and Valley and Harrisonburg. It's been great, because many of them have had the community colleges associated with it. And of course, we here locally partner with Nova. And there's some economic pieces you don't think about. And as talking to the community college presidents, and we think about our own local economy, and it's really about adults and how you seek to improve yourself. And the community colleges actually have tougher times when the economy's doing well, like right now, because people have jobs. Unemployment's at a record low. When we see unemployment rise is when the community colleges see people go to improve their skills, and then they go back trying to find a job. And I think, hopefully, what we can leave with the children, the students we have today as they graduate, is that kind of surging is nice, but having a passion for lifelong learning and seeking to continually improve yourself throughout your 30- or 40-year career, and I hate to tell guys that, but that's how long you're gonna have to work, is probably a better strategy. So, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Albrecht. Next, Mr. O'Hanlon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Congratulations, everyone honored tonight. I think Mr. Albrecht-
I think Mr. Albrecht said it all very nicely. And during Teacher Appreciation Week, I would like to thank all our City of Manassas teachers, and especially the many who have personally impacted my children. We are eternally grateful for your service and dedication, and thank you to all the nurses who have taken care of our children over the years. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Mrs. Seberg.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Congratulations to all that were honored here tonight. I want to encourage everyone, students and adults, to reach out and thank a teacher, thank a nurse, for what they do for us. I also want to thank the PTAs and the PTOs for organizing lunches and treats in mailboxes and things like that, because I think it really does help the teachers feel appreciated. As Mrs. Williams mentioned, we conducted our interviews for the student representatives, and I wanted to say that we're gonna make our recommendation to the full board in closed session on May 22nd, and we hope to formally introduce them at the June 5th school board meeting. Also about Rock Fest, the guitar concert on Thursday night, there's no entry fee, but you need to bring canned food, so we want to see cases and cases of canned food. And that's all I have tonight.
Thank you. Mrs. Williams.
I also want to congratulate all the honorees today, and the teachers, and the nurses, and the coaches, and all the administration, everybody who makes this, this school system work well. One of my son's favorite teachers is sitting right back there, Mrs. Vandavere, so we have some fantastic teachers who stay here for the long haul. Thank you for all that you do. I am gonna keep my comments short. I want to read one quote that I want all teachers and people who touch children's lives think about this. "In teaching, you cannot see the fruit of a day's work. It's invisible and remains so, maybe even for twenty years." And that's true. I think a lot of kids take us all for granted, and then when they're in college, or maybe even after college, they kind of think back to their favorite teachers and who influenced them, so don't ever forget that when you're having a bad day. And that's it, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Di Maria.
Thank you, sir. Last Saturday, a week ago Saturday, we had Manassas Reads, and, I'm a jackass here. The turnout is just incredible. The number of books that are scooped up and taken away, and hopefully read, I assume they are. This sort of community thing that we do, that our staff does, I just showed up and looked good, but they, it's so critically important. And reading, believe it or not, is fundamental, and it's the most important thing we can teach our kids, because everything starts from reading. And I just love the fact that we do that, and I love the fact that so many kids turn out, so many people turn out to read for our kids. I just think it's a great thing. Teacher Appreciation Week. Said this before, and I'll say it again until I take my last breath. The most important people in Manassas, the most important people on this planet are our teachers. Everything starts with our teachers. Without our teachers, we don't have astronauts. Without our teachers, we don't have Manassas Police Citizen of the Year, Employee of the Year, an Osborne grad. Without our teachers, we're nothing. They come first. They are by far the most important people we have. I know how hard they work. I married one. Best decision I ever made, because I helped raise one as well after that. If I was on my own without a teacher, I don't know what my daughters would have become. But when you see a teacher, thank them every day, not just this week, because they're not just important this week. Everybody's important in this world. They are. But the most important are our teachers. And I firmly, firmly believe that. So thank a teacher today, tomorrow, thank you all who are here, and next week, thank a teacher too, every day. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Vice Chairman Kiefer.
What he said. He took all that I was gonna say.
You married one?
No, I did marry one, but I was raised by one. So I had the fortune, I guess you would call it fortune now that I'm an adult, of having my mother as a teacher four times. It's the hardest days of my life and the best days of my life. And she, yes, yes, and I'm still standing. My mom is the reason I'm up here. She's the one who said, "You gotta do this, you gotta keep fighting for those kids." I thank her every day, and I look out, I was standing up there today, just looking at everybody, and it really takes a community to do what happens here. It's teachers, it's bus drivers, it's security officers, it's SROs, it is everybody. Everybody teaches our kids. Everybody in our division and everybody in our community is a teacher, to our greatest asset, our kids. So I just want to thank everybody. To Mr. Di Maria's point, a thank you goes farther than anything for a teacher or a staff member that works with our kids and works so very hard. And I can say that as the product of a teacher. I watched how hard she worked. I watched blood, sweat, and tears at home all the time. I watched lesson planning on weekends. It's a lot of work, and I just commend everybody who does it every day. So thank you so very much.
Thank you. I guess, next is me. I wrote down a few notes really quickly. First, the Prince William Bar, I thank them for their work. I'm a proud member of the Virginia Bar, and as a lawyer, I hear lawyer jokes like every week, you know? And none of them are good. You know, I was in California with my daughter this weekend, and one of her friends told us, who are both lawyers, a lawyer joke, and I was like, "That's not funny, dude." But anyhow, we do do a lot of good, believe it or not. Especially if you are in jail, and you call a lawyer, right? But anyhow, I thank them for the work they do, because it's very important, and I appreciate it. And one of the people who came up with the Prince William Bar, Ms. Hudson, I've known her since, I think I moved to Manassas. Her daughter and my daughter graduated from Osborne together, and even though her child is no longer in Osborne, I'm glad to see that she's helping our community, which is bringing to community partners. Folks say it takes a village to raise a child. It really does, and in order for us to be the best we can be, as I said many times before, we need to have everybody involved and engaged, and having our community partners support us is invaluable. You never know what one person can say to affect one child's life, and so many of our partners and folks who support us do that, so I thank them very much for their help. Our school nurses. I'm not married to a nurse, I'm married to a doctor, but we have nurses in our office that we work, and I work another job doing that too. And school nurses, I can tell you, are invaluable to what we do. Children deal with so much today, based on when we were growing up, so to speak. I mean, there's countless issues that Ms. Radford mentioned they deal with, and school nurses handle that, and they handle it gracefully, and they handle it well, and they do it with, you know, not as many resources as they could have generally nationwide, so we really appreciate their help and what they do for all our children. And finally, teachers. My wife is here, so I have to mention her again. My wife and I actually were both teachers before we took, went to grad school and went to our professions. She taught Spanish, I taught math, full-time. So we realized how hard it is to teach, and after we both talked, we're like, you know, we gotta go back to school. But my dad was a teacher for forty years, and he loved it. He still talks about teaching, he misses it, even though he's retired. And I got an email, or a Facebook request sometime earlier this year, from a student from his high school who saw my name, which is the same as my dad, and said, you know, "I remember, you know, you had the same name, and your dad, a week with high school, and worked with my teacher, and he affected my life, he turned me around." So that was like, are you serious? Like, thirty years later, you're gonna find someone and say what they did for your life? So that's just a small example, but our teachers are incredible. I thank the ones who are still here. I appreciate all that you do. We really appreciate you, and the impact you have on children is lifelong. All of us have had teachers who helped us to be where we are, and we would not be where we are, as Mr. Di Maria said, without great teachers. So thank you for all the time, the effort, the energy, the diligence, and the resources you put into our children. We can't thank you enough, and we appreciate you. And that's actually all for me, so I will move on to citizens' comments. I'll give you citizens' comments this evening. Well, moving on. Next, consent agenda, may I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, would the school board of the City of Manassas adopt the consent agenda as modified?
Second, was modified, or the superintendent?
Yes.
Yes. Motion by Mr. Albrecht, second by Ms. Di Maria, that the school board of the City of Manassas approve the consent agenda as modified. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it, seven-zero. Next up, the discussion agenda, and the first item in the discussion agenda is policies. Ms. Kiefer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As I mentioned earlier, the policy committee did just meet last night, and there were some policies put forward and discussed related to sections A, C, E, G, I, J, and L. So many were reviewed, and I just wanted to provide an update prior to the discussion that substantive changes, there are no substantive changes. Basically, what we've done is look at the Virginia School Board Association's policy recommendations and decide to adopt them or modify them for our own purposes. Everything we've looked at were either updates in verb tenses, which is something that's somewhat new for the SBA, so it's literally going to that granular level of looking at verb tenses now, or just updating some legal references or things we have to cross with our regulations to make sure everything meshes. So there were no substantive changes. They are really small changes, but Mr. Di Maria and Mrs. Seberg, if there's anything that I've missed in terms of what we discussed, please let me know. Good?
No.
No?
Staff, just, you know, you're sitting there going through these things, and it's one thing after another, and staff has put in so much work for, is doing, or should do, or whatever the tense is, and they've gone through all of these things, and it takes so much time to do these little things that are necessary to do, so I'd like to thank staff for all their work on this.
I agree, and I have to say, they got us in and out, so we made it home for the Caps game last night, so we are really happy with our staff.
I always believe in anyone.
So that's my update, sir.
Okay, thank you. And I'd like to echo their thanks, because these policies are kind of like some law, can be kind of not fun to go through, but they do a great job of giving us a synopsis and telling us what we need to know and working with it. So thank you, staff, for the work you're doing, the policies. Next is the action agenda, and we only have two items, so let me get out here by eight. Not that I'm looking at the clock, but I'm just saying, I'm just saying. The first item under all business is the appointment of a superintendent of schools. May I have a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the school board of the City of Manassas appoint Dr. Kevin D. Newman as superintendent of the City of Manassas Schools for a three-year term, beginning July 1st, 2018, and ending June 30th, 2021, and that the chairman and clerk be authorized to execute a contract with Dr. Newman, setting forth, among other things, his pay and benefits and provisions for termination with or without cause.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Albrecht, second by Ms. Kiefer, that the school board of the City of Manassas appoint Dr. Kevin D. Newman as superintendent of Manassas City Public Schools for a three-year term commencing July 1st, 2018, and ending June 30th, 2021, and that the chairman and clerk be authorized to execute a contract with Dr. Newman, setting forth, among other things, his pay and benefits and provisions for termination with or without cause. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it, seven-zero. Congratulations, Dr. Newman. And before we move on, we're gonna have Dr. Newman address us for a minute, and introduce his wonderful daughter who's here. And while it's coming up, I'll say that I was thinking of some words to say, but I'm jet-lagged and coming from LA last night, so couldn't think too, too well, but one thing that did come to me was, there's a verse in the Bible that says, "Too much is given, much is required or expected." And we're giving you the keys to our most precious resources, to our kingdom oversight, and we expect you to do great things. We have full confidence that you can, so thank you for being here, and we look forward to hearing your words tonight.
Chairman Williams, members of the school board, superintendent McGorick, close?
Very good.
Any students, parents, staff, and community members, I stand before you humbled and honored that you have provided me the opportunity to serve as superintendent of Manassas City Public Schools. The road ahead will be challenging. As we know, education is in a constant flux of change, but if we can come together and use our collective strengths together, we can make Manassas Public Schools somewhere that all stakeholders will be proud to call their own. I recognize that Manassas City Public Schools is embraced by a supportive and collaborative community that is proud of your many accomplishments. Some that I've grown to really be fond of is your strong STEM program that goes from elementary to the high school, and ER program that was able to present at the state level because of all the great things that you're doing. Band programs that consistently come back with superior ratings when I was going through the schools, that was talked about a lot. A chief financial officer, there's one awards for his budgeting practices. Outstanding administrators, I didn't get a chance to meet with Dr. Jones, and I'm looking forward to meeting her, but everyone that I did meet that day just put pride in me that I would be coming. I was hoping, I was hoping that I was gonna be selected to, to work with them, just for the passion that they had for the students of Manassas City. While researching the division before I submitted my application, the thing that really stood out to me is the first protocol for the school board talked about what you wanted to do for students. And if we can come together and put students first, we're gonna be very successful. If we put students first and make them the core of all of our decisions, we will make sure that we are taking care of all of our staff as well. Because if we're going to give our students a quality education, it's gonna come from qualified people and staff members at all levels, from our bus drivers to the members of the central office, that we will be offering the best education that we can. The weeks and months ahead will be hard. It's gonna take hard work, perseverance, and a singular focus on our students. You know, Henry Ford once said, "Coming together in the beginning, keeping us, keeping together is a progress, working together is success, and together we will jump off all these obstacles, and we will make Manassas City." It's already great, but we're gonna take it to another level, and I'm looking forward to working with. Dr. McGorick, throughout this transition process, I was able to attend the VAS conference, started on Sunday, left this morning. When I got there for dinner, sitting across the table from me was a former Manassas City Assistant Superintendent, and his name was Bob Rose. And he's talking about Manassas City, and I'm sitting there because, you know, I was hoping you were gonna approve me tonight, but I didn't want to jump the gun, so I'm just listening, and he just could not stop talking about the great things that's going on in Manassas City. The next morning, I got a chance to meet your wonderful superintendent, and we got a chance to talk, and as I said, I'm looking forward to meeting with her and talking to her throughout this transition. Then the program started, and the true star of Manassas City stood on that stage, and that was a senior at the school, Ms. Gladys Gonzalez. And she talked about her love for reading and how that came from the educators in our system, and she did a wonderful job representing the school division. And, you know, sitting in that room, I was not officially the superintendent, but I was so proud to say, "That's my student." And then we ended with a presentation from Lee Colburn, and I found out that she's gonna be working with the division, and she's gonna be here the next two days at the high school, and she had a powerful presentation. So I was surrounded from Sunday until today by Manassas City, and for me, that was a sign that I'm coming to the right place. And now I'm standing in front of you, and this is July 2nd, at 9:00 AM. I'll be the superintendent of Manassas City, and I'm so grateful and honored for the, for the board for giving me this opportunity, so thank you. I do have with me tonight my daughter Kyra, my wife Angela, she's at home with my son Aiden, he's five, he's in pre-K, and we didn't think he was gonna make it. I wasn't sure how long the meeting was gonna last, but again, thank you so much. I'm looking forward to working with everyone. I feel that together that we can do great things here, so thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Newman. Welcome, welcome, Kyra. Look forward to seeing you, because you got the college in the fall. When you said the true star of the VAS, Kristen, I thought you were gonna say the true star of Manassas City, which is Mr. Albrecht, the VFF president, but, you know, this is the current.
I was getting more.
But thank you.
You're a shirking star, so.
Hey, as long as you're up there, don't you sound bad at some point. Before we move on to the next item, are there any comments anyone wants to make? I don't wanna throw anybody or stop anybody from making any comments before we move on. Any folks have any comments to make? Go for it.
I just wanted to say welcome aboard. I think what you had to say to us this evening is inspiring. We have great things going on here, as you...
We have great things going on here, as you alluded to. We look forward to continuing those great things and we just welcome you and your family to Manassas.
Thank you. All right, anybody else? If not, we'll move on. The last item on the agenda, finance negotiations, FY two thousand eighteen nineteen, student fees and charges, building use fees and charges, food services fees and charges and fee waiver guidelines. Mr. Hawkins.
Good evening. I'm here tonight to request approval of the fiscal year two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen fees and charges as shown in the packet. This proposal has no increase in fees to students, no change in student or staff breakfast or lunch prices, no change in the fee waiver guidelines or procedures. The only change from the current approved fee is the market adjustment proposed for commercial and non-commercial building rental fees. These fees have been separated by elementary and immediate and middle and high school. These hourly rates have been adjusted to reflect the current market in this region, but does not change the rates that MCPS currently has in place to protect our investment in the Gillenfield complex. In this way, MCPS fees are fair and appropriate while still protecting the multimillion dollar investment made by this community. Therefore, Mr. Chair, I'm requesting approval of the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen student fees and charges, building use fees and charges, food service fees and charges, and the fee waiver guidelines and procedures. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hawkins. May I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move that the school board of the City of Manassas approve the eighteen nineteen school fees and charges, building use fees, food service fees and charges and fee waiver guidelines as presented.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Di Maria, second by Ms. Kiefer, that the school board of the City of Manassas approve the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen student fees and charges, building use fees, food services fees and charges and fee waiver guidelines as presented. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chair, I guess I asked Mr. Hawkins to clarify in the statements, because we've had a lot of discussion on building use fees specifically.
Yes, sir.
Did I hear you say they're staying as they are or have they changed?
For the Gillenfield project, where we have spent a significant investment, we have in that, in that project, the fees for the fields has not changed from the prior year. So Albrecht, if you can go to the building rental, non-commercial fees, please. So if you go down to, you see at the high school, keep going. So right there, you see the fields for the high school where it says thirteen hundred dollars and five hundred dollars. Those, if you go back, scroll up just a little bit more, you'll see those are hourly rates. So we have, and that's what it was, but it has been in the past. So I have not changed those fees. I know that the board has expended a great deal of citizen taxpayer funds in those areas and we wanted to protect those areas from overuse.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? If not, affirmation mentioned, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it, seven zero. And thank you, Mr. Hawkins and Ms. Kiefer and your team for the hard work you put into this. I know you guys put a lot of time in this, so we appreciate it. Thank you. And I believe that's all. May I have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move that the school board meeting adjourn.
Second.
No one wants to leave. Motion by Ms. Kiefer, second by Ms. Di Maria, that the school board meeting adjourn.